This is just, yeah, this is just the ventilation.
Yeah, correct.
Ready, Kerry?
Whenever you are.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with Fledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mottler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Prove agenda.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Here.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. And Packard.
Here. Yes.
And Mottler.
Here. Hi. Out here.
Well, wow, the forums got it right.
We don't have any. There's no minutes, right?
Right.
Um, now it's time for public comment if there is any. Hearing none. We'll start with the mechanic or the ventilation system on the courthouse. Who wants to, or? Or do we want to start a?
Well, can I start with the questions? And that is?
Sorry. Do we know yet? Have we heard yet from? All right, Bailey?
Yeah.
How much of this is reimbursable?
So, in a nutshell, um, what they had said is that there is a $10 million like standard deduction basically or standard allowance for revenue loss. So, we can claim essentially since we're getting about 2.7 million, we can claim that entire amount as a revenue loss and that money can then be used for government services. So, we can, you know, they said essentially, yes, we could put it towards the jail project. We can, as long as we're doing that to improve government services, we can do that.
So, we could put $10 million toward?
Well, 2.7 because that's all.
2.7, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We also have some money left that you guys had set aside for building projects. So, there is a roughly, I believe, about 700,000 left in that.
Okay.
So.
So, we got roughly 3.4 then.
Right.
Okay.
I think essentially for the HVAC system itself, we have two options. Scott's been reviewing the options. I know he had some questions, so maybe, you know, might be a good idea for him to ask those questions and go from there. I'm sure there's somebody on here that can answer some of those and I know that. Yep, we have Ryan on there and he is our engineer, so.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, I'll entertain any questions about the report that we put together for the HVAC system.
Yeah, that's. Can you hear me? Got to turn that off.
Yes, hear you loud and clear.
It's on, you're good. Nope, you got it off.
Okay.
There you go.
Um, so, props. Trying to understand the ducting in here. The ducting is gonna exist with either option because that is that? Is that what's feeding the fresh air into the building?
Yes, that's the intent that either option would have that that fresh air HVAC unit and the ducting and the floor grills or the sidewall grills. Yep, that would take care of the fresh air to the building.
Okay. That's why I kind of thought that. Wasn't sure on that. So, both options utilize a unit ventilator then? Like something similar what we have here now? Just once, one's uses water and another uses refrigerant?
That's a good way to summarize it, yeah. One of the major advantages to the one that uses refrigerant is that it can be heating in one room and cooling in another room at the same time. Maybe that sounds funny, but it happens all the time where you have requirements like that. Whereas the fan coil unit system like you have now is limited. You're either available to cool in all the rooms or to heat. You can shut it off, but you can't do the opposite.
Right. Okay. So, with option two, what does that, you know, look like? I mean, is that inside the duck work? Is it hanging on a wall, hanging on the ceiling, kind of like we have now or?
The option two, that's the refrigerant one, right? I gotta get my.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a variety of different kinds of units that will actually be in the rooms. They can be similar to what you have now as far as how they look, where they hang from the ceiling or mount on the wall, where they could be a console type that's that's against the wall down low. Even could be a type that goes in a closet and then has duck work that comes out of it. We were anticipating it would be more like console type ones like you have now just because there's already a place for them. There's already holes where the pipes are, so we could reuse some of that.
Right, okay. So, either system obviously utilizes a condensate pan.
Yes, both do.
Station.
Yep.
So, so that they would all be piped back to a single pipe that's downback graded to the boiler room, I'm assuming, or into our into our sewer system, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. You have any idea how that's actually laid out in here after your study or? I mean, does the, does each floor feed into a one inch line or three quarter inch line? Do you know?
You know, we didn't, we didn't get into that level of detail. I would, just just thinking about how I would lay it out. If there's, if there's a drain nearby somewhere, we would probably try to make use of that. It's not that we have to bring it all to the basement or to the boiler room where that we have to collect an entire floor first and then down. I think it would probably be quite a combination of places where the drains can go.
Okay. Okay, so that's just kind of a work in progress then as we go along is what?
It would be part of the design and it would be well thought out.
Would you be reusing that condensate line that they are now?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just kind of curious because they seem to have a lot of problems with it now. But obviously, there's some preventive maintenance involved and keeping those green pans open regardless of either system to use, so. Okay.
Ryan, I'm trying to remember when we discussed the reports back when you guys first did that. It seemed like there were some differences in the duct work as far as like the main public hallways were concerned. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because I think that might be part of the, you know, a factor in the decision too.
You'll have to forgive me. It's been a little while. I did review the report earlier today. I did some really high level sketches in the report. I guess as far as the the main corridor, we were trying to avoid running the ducks through there just thinking that that's a little area that you'd like to maintain as being a little more dressy that we would try to keep the duck work inside the individual rooms instead. That was Carrie that asked the question. Can you elaborate a little bit more if you jog my memory about that?
I'm just kind of trying to remember myself. It seemed like with the two options, there were differences in like the amount of duct work. Or maybe we were talking about a different system altogether, but I just seem to remember you saying that that there would be more duct work if we went with a certain type of system.
Okay, yeah, it's possible that that was one of the earlier systems that we ended up eliminating. This, the the system that we're proposing here for the fresh air, that's that's the part that has the duct work. And it's a relatively small duct work because it's only providing fresh air. Like, for example, the the room that you're sitting in, the commission room there, like to cool that when that's full of people with air, it might take like a, let's just say, a 24 inch by 14 inch duct. Well, for just the fresh air, it might take only a a 10 inch round duct or, so you get by with a lot smaller duct work system because it's only fresh air. You're not cooling the room with that air.
Okay.
And that's, that's probably one of the earlier conversations we had and then we eliminated that system that that requires the more air and the larger duct work. It would also be very difficult to fit that system in in your building for the large duct work.
I think that answers the question.
Good. Um, just a comment about in the report, there was a cost estimate done. Just bear in mind that that was done in October of 2021 and a lot's happened since then.
You're saying everything went?
I mean, it's gone down?
Yeah, right.
So, how much do you think it's went up accordingly percentage wise?
Oh, I was hoping you wouldn't ask me that, but just, I just know that it's got to be higher than than back then.
Because you got the top, if we go with option two and I'm looking at it, it says the top is 510 to 615. So, is it, is that 615 still that on the bottom now or what?
I would certainly recommend using the the high end of the range.
Well, I guess before we get stuck on price, we're gonna have to, we need to figure out if we're gonna move forward with this and then they can reprice it.
Right.
That's true. I mean, if we're not gonna do it, I'd hate to have them go to work. Plus, I'd also be surprised if we didn't move forward. I think everybody's everybody's in agreement they were before to move forward. So, does this get rid of the pipes, the the old boiler pipes or how does that?
Like the ones exposed to?
Yes.
Like even in the room, you're sitting there. I can't see him in the video, but I think you have exposed piping there. The option one for replacing basically like for like, it would remain. And the option two with the refrigerant one, it would be different pipes and they're they're a little more flexible as far as where they can go and they're smaller.
Okay.
But but I don't want you to get the idea that there's no pipes. I mean, it's still, everything's still connected with pipes.
But the these larger pipes would be gutted out of here with option two. Go ahead, understand it.
Yes, yep.
Because the refrigerant is a two pipe system, each unit.
Right, and they're smaller.
Smaller, like three quarter inch, one inch, somewhere in there, do you know?
They're they're insulated. The largest pipe would not be over three quarter inches, but then it would have a probably one inch insulation, so.
Right.
But there's not going to be any six inch pipes.
Yeah. They would appear a lot like the smaller ones that we'd have overhead here from where I have had experience with them before.
Okay.
It's about a two inch, two inch insulated pipe right now.
Yeah, that, I don't think they'd be any bigger than that with the insulation, yep.
Is there a difference in in energy usage between option one and option two?
There would be some, you gotta. It's not gonna be a huge difference because they're they're both acquiring their heat from natural gas fired boilers that high efficiency type. And then rejecting their heat to the outdoors, which are kind of the main things that consume energy. And then, of course, the the energy used to heat and cool that fresh air, that's the same between the two because it's the same unit. I don't know if you want more detail than that. It's not like one is gonna use half the energy as the other.
Fair enough. Thank you. Yep.
And if I remember right, in the report, that's, if you want with the large enough boilers at safety center could be tied in. I mean, that would be an option down the road in the future.
Yeah, to tie the two together, as long as there's not a problem with sharing utilities, you know, there'd only be one gas meter. I think something else to consider was if you are required to have a backup fuel source. Because I think their boiler might be tied to fuel oil as well as a backup.
Correct, yep.
But but yeah, the concept is there that you could size them accordingly.
Okay.
But if we're not housing prisoners, we don't have to have that backup, correct?
Actually, it depends on whether you have law enforcement center or the communications center. Communication center has to have backup power.
So, I guess I'm looking, hoping.
Yeah, no, the next one.
I'm with you, but
it would just depend whether you still have a law enforcement center there.
And this new boiler, will that get rid of the chimney that we have now?
Yeah, at least the one on the courthouse. Uh, because it it does not need to be a tall stack.
Good.
If I remember right, the safety center has a chimney that's kind of added on the outside of the building. Is that, you know, that that one would need to stay there if that boiler's still there.
Do you know? Because I can't recall.
Sorry, did you ask me a question? I didn't.
No, I was just, I didn't know if Andy was on if he could answer that question.
Well, I'm on, yes, sorry. Yeah, the chimney that runs up from the essentially above the garage on the safety center to the roof of the courthouse handles the exhaust from the boiler. There's a second one next to it that handles the exhaust from the generator, essentially a tailpipe. If you look out, you'll see two of them. The boiler in the safety center runs on natural gas. It can run on fuel oil, but doesn't have to. That's just an option. We have done it on occasion to burn off the fuel oil we have, so just essentially essentially to freshen it up. You wouldn't have to continue that. So, you could continue to have the the backup power in the generator and, you know, go a different way with the boiler.
Okay. So, that simplifies it. We don't need fuel oil and we already have a generator for backup, so.
Yeah, the that chimney though is an issue. I mean, you, there's gonna come a day, it's gonna need to be addressed. If you've looked at it, it's looks pretty deteriorated. But so, no, no way around that. If you have that boiler in that basement, you've got to exhaust that that that, you know, smoke out of there, if you want to call it that.
The the new boilers have more flexibility in their venting, but but Andy, yes, the the existing one, if that's still gonna remain there, the chimney would have to remain.
I don't know. I got a question regarding that then. In overtime, Sam Johnson from Johnson Heating and Cooling has suggested that we change out the courthouse boiler and then use the safety center one as a backup. He thought that would be appropriate as a backup. But then you'd get a higher efficiency boiler that would run both buildings. I don't know if that's possible. Even if you kept it as a backup, you'd still need that chimney. So, I don't see any way to get rid of that chimney except for to eliminate or replace the safety center boiler, which is less efficient than it could be, but fully perfectly functional, you know?
Part of the the recommendation in the study was to to actually provide two boilers in the courthouse to act as a backup and usually we size those, you figure out a theoretical maximum load for heating and then you size each of them at about 75% of that. And the thinking is if if one of them fails, you've still got three quarters and the reason I said theoretical load is because, you know, we're conservative. We want to make sure you have enough heat. So, in reality, probably one boiler will be fine even on the coldest day. But that that would act as the backup.
So, you said this plan does have two boilers in the plan?
Yes, yep.
So, we can get rid of the one in the safety center basement and the one for the courthouse? Is that correct or not?
Well, that that would work, yes. I mean, in in my report and cost estimating in that, we were figuring, I think, just sizing the boilers based on the courthouse. I'm not sure how much we thought over that idea of sharing between the buildings, but that that's fine. We can explore that more.
I think we should. And then if if the day comes where we don't have emergency services or anything in there, then we can then we can at least plummet over there, correct? Or do we do that right away?
You could do either, yeah. We should talk through all that, you know, as we get farther into it, yeah. You know, you could plummet in now and buy the 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 bigger boilers now or, I mean, there's other options too. You could you could buy two that serve the courthouse and then add a third one later to and then between the three of them, you could carry both buildings. There's lots of options.
Is having three, is that a more efficient way to do it or is?
It it more covers the the redundancy side of it or phasing, like if you're trying to delay buying more equipment or something, you buy a third one later. As far as efficiency, I don't think there's a real advantage. If it were mine, I'd rather only have two than three, but it there's just the the idea of redundancy is that if you have three and you lose one, then you've only lost one third instead of if you only have two and you lose one and you lose half of what you have.
Could you? Could you size two boilers to pick up the entire operation?
Yeah, we couldn't. Yeah, two, two large ones, yep.
Right. Okay.
Sounds better.
Yeah, and the, this is Andy again. You know, Sam had suggested many times over the years to me about replacing boilers and his intent with the our existing safety center one is just leave it in place for, you know, emergency use, but then I mean, you need to keep all the piping there and the chimney and all, but he described it as even though it's fully functional, got many years of left in its life as being inefficient. And, you know, he describes it, you know, 10 and 20% more efficient means reducing your electric bill or your heat bill by 10 or 20%. He said that much heat's going out that chimney. So, even though it's 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 got life left in it, it's not as efficient as what is out there these days.
Right, I'd agree with that, yeah.
And I'd like to get rid of the chimney before it falls down too. So, I suppose we should should do the two boilers that would cover cover both buildings.
Okay.
So, I don't know what you need to do on your end to figure if you need to come back and look at the safety center for how you want to handle this.
And then, yeah, if if this advances to to a project that we're gonna design in that, I anticipate coming back. I mean, probably two or three more times to investigate things and to meet with you and yeah, we, by by no means did we complete the design when we did the study.
So, what should we move forward with option two, with two boilers that handle both buildings?
I think so.
I think so.
If I can get a motion on that.
I still move.
Before you vote, there were a few other options on the presented there. Do you want to include all of that in your motion? Just using that cost summary sheet, there's the boiler replacement, the the ventilation system, which is the duct work and that fresh air HVAC unit. I kind of see those two as like, like you have to do both of those and then you choose. It sounds like you're leaning towards option two, which is the refrigerant based system. So, then you'd pick that. And then there's also like a fire sprinkler system. Adding that, there's a you do that, you'll need some type of fire alarm system upgrade. And if you don't do that, you'd still need a fire, or we'd recommend a fire alarm system upgrade. There were a few other things we threw in there, like a replacement of telecommunication cabling, electrical distribution gear and LED lighting upgrades. I didn't know how far you wanted to to take it at this point.
Yeah, I think at this point, I'd include boiler replacement, ventilation system installation option two. And then I assume that general work allowance has got to be in there, is that?
Yes.
So, and then I, you know, I think the fire protection options are probably worth further discussion. I think in the past, we sort of looked at the, we've leaned toward the least expensive option, which was the fire alarm system, but you know, that's probably worth discussion. I don't know what kind of shape is our telecommunication cabling in.
It it could use replacement in the, you know, the near future. It's maybe not completely out of date at this point, but I know our IT people have have expressed that it could be updated fairly fairly soon.
Yeah, so does that, is it cheaper to do this all at once? Or would it be possible for us to make that decision once we have the updated numbers? You know, I'm a little concerned about our capacity at this point, our financial capacity.
Sure, well, certainly designing it, you can let us know anytime. As far as rolling it all into one project and one contract, there's there's always economy of scale. So, I'd say it'd be it'd be cheaper to do it all together as one contract, but I mean, take your time to to decide if you want to add one, as long as we have enough time to to get documents together for bidding it.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yep, that's exactly what I wanted to know. And I assume the LED light fixture upgrade can be done at any time. It doesn't.
Right.
Okay, and then the
most of the lighting in the courthouse with LEDs, kind of like retrofitted already, would this be like a different lighting fixtures all throughout the building? Or does that make a difference that we already have LED bulbs?
You know, I didn't dig into part of that, that part of the study. I was thinking that that you do have a lot of fluorescent lighting in parts of the the building, certainly if they're already converted to LED, there'd be no no reason to change them unless for consistency or how they look or something.
And most of them are already using bulbs, LED bulbs that are retrofitted to the fluorescent fixtures.
Okay.
Great, so.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Electrical distribution gear replacement? Is that?
Yeah, we need that.
We need that.
Yeah, we should do that.
Okay.
So, I think. So I think, um, if we can just, if we go back to the fire sprinkler system, we need, do we want, we've got exposed piping in heads or we've got more concealed piping in heads? Which one? Which one would we rather see?
I, I would think you'd want to conceal it because it does stick out there like a sore thumb. You know, it's going to look, obviously, so this is my opinion.
And keep in mind that it, it's not that one option has invisible heads. It's, it's just, we would show and specify like covers or softets over top of pipes rather than just exposed pipes.
Right.
Um, be more effort. So then there's more cost, of course, uh, on the construction side.
So it's a forty-five, I mean, forty-five thousand dollar difference. On October's numbers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because if you take what we've just talked about, the one, two, three, four things and not anything else, take the high, high totals, you're over a million dollars now. And if you add that eighty-eight, if you add in the, for example, if you put the, and I didn't put the eighty-eight thousand in either. So you're approximately close to just about, about one and a half million. But not that many. I take that back. Another eighty thousand.
Okay.
I don't know. Um, this is Bill with Beckenhour Construction.
One point one.
Go ahead.
Um, just a quick comment. This conversation doesn't necessarily involve me, but I know Carrie had sent over this, uh, packet for these upgrades, um, because I know we helped out on the roof renovation project and um, just one thing maybe to throw into the mix on this project that I don't know if it's being considered on the pricing and I haven't really looked into this is in order to execute all this work with the building occupied, which I'm assuming that has to be the case. Unless this work is being asked to be done at night and at during the weekends. Um, you're, you're going to need probably containment, like separation walls, pos-, you know, whether that's plastic, whether that's building drywall partitions to probably get in and to run all this piping, to do the sprinkler work. Um, there's, there's probably a lot of other costs that are not in these numbers because I'm assuming Ryan, these numbers are mainly mechanical, electrical and plumbing. There's probably a sub that helped you put this together. They probably don't have a lot of the other means and methods that I would say that possibly could, that would be required to do this. I'm not trying to throw a wrench into the plan, but um, depending on how you're planning on executing this work, whether you're going to, you know, hire uh, Beckenhour to do it as for any management or supervision, or you're planning on just running with it. Um, the county's planning on running with it and organizing it. There's going to be some other, other requirements.
Yeah, that is a good point. Uh, thank you, Bill. And, and Bill, I don't know if you were on the, on the call when I mentioned that these were October numbers, so we, we already have to inflate them, uh, for
That's the reason why I didn't get on when you are, they were asking you for price increases because I was waiting to see what you were going to say. Yeah, um, definitely, uh, everybody knows things are going up. I would not want to throw a percentage on it, but I would not want to, I would not want to run to the bank with these numbers by any means.
No.
But given, um, the funds that it looks like we would have available to us because of federal, um, COVID money. It, what makes sense to me, and so I'll, I'll try a motion again, um, is to include the boiler replacements, ventilation system installation, HVAC system replacement option two, the general work allowance. Include the fire protection sprinkler system with, um, concealed piping and heads. Include the replacement of telecommunications cabling and include the electrical distribution gear replacement. Um, and I propose this ambitious, um, proposal because it's not very often that the county actually gets a chunk of money. Um, that doesn't have to go to the operating budget. And so for once, we actually have a bit of capital that we can spend on stabilizing this building. And I think it would make a huge difference in the long run. I also don't think that we ought to spend ARPA money on anything except infrastructure, long-term capital. You know, just for financial, um, stability reasons, right? So you don't, you don't want to spend it on anything other than capital. And so I think we've got a, a capital project here that would bring the courthouse. It would modernize it. It would make it so much more comfortable for all the folks who work here. Um, and so that would be my proposal. It's a little over two million. Um, but it does look like without even, you know, with, even with the escalated prices, we would still be okay because it looks like we would, we have about three point four million, including our building fund and the ARPA money, um, to enhance, um, public services. So with three point four million in hand, I think we can actually do it. So that's my motion.
I'd second that. Uh, one of the things, like, uh, for instance, on the fire protection sprinkler system, uh, you'll notice that the word, uh, exposed piping and heads or more concealed piping and head is that I think we ought to keep in mind is that, that, uh, even the, uh, there's probably in a lot of way, a lot of it, there's not a lot of difference between the two. Uh, the concealing may be a little less than we hope it might be. Uh, maybe a little more visually aesthetic, uh, heads, but you're still going to, the nature sprinkler systems, that they have to have a, uh, they have to be relatively close to each other. So they overlap somewhat. And, uh, so is it possible for us to get a, a look at both? Uh, uh, the new pricing on both because I'm wondering if we, once we take a look at what uh, the difference between the two systems might be, it might not be forty-five or fifty thousand dollars worth to us.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can certainly adjust the, the estimate and that's even a possible, maybe we don't want to confuse the project with a lot of alternates, but
Correct.
That, that's one idea is base bid could be a more simple system and, and the more concealed would be an, an alternate and added cost.
Right. I think that'd be the right
But, but yeah, certainly in, in the estimating phase, um.
And in the meantime, you know, if you've got some, some pictures that tell, shows us what, about what kind of differences we'd be talking about. Uh, chances are we would just go with one or the other immediately, once we knew what we were paying for.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, another comment, oh, and I, I was, uh, adding up all the numbers from my estimate of the ones that you were choosing. Now I was getting one point three six four million. And then of, of course, we need to inflate that. One, one of the commissioners mentioned a, a two million, that, that might be after we inflate it, but just make sure we're looking at the same numbers.
I don't have my older, I, I annotated this and figured it out, uh, earlier when we first got this in October and yeah, I think that's closer to what my, my ads were and this proposal's uh, pretty much exactly what I had thought would be the best way to go back when we first got these estimates.
As far as which ones to choose?
Yeah, uh, the ones that we've proposed here and that would be with the, uh, more exposed piping and heads on the fire, fire protection system.
Will you be able to get, I mean, what Bill was talking about a little while ago, that there's other added costs. Will you be able to bring those costs into this project also, so that we kind of get an idea? You know, I, I know you can't give us an exact one, but I'd like to have a little bit closer if there's some other costs in there that we're not aware of right now. Will you be able to do that?
Yeah, I think as the, as it moves into a, a project that we're designing, uh, it's pretty typical that we provide estimates. And then as we design more, you know, maybe we find out we don't need this thing we thought we did and we can take that out. And then of course we'll find something we needed that we didn't know about and we'll add that back in. Uh, kind of dial it in as we get through the design. So, so yes, I'd, you know, there would be a series of cost estimates to make sure we're not surprised on bid day.
Because my personal feeling is we got three point four billion, but I want some of that to go towards the new jail. I don't want to sit here and spend it all right here. I'm sorry. I got, I, part of me says we got to put something out there too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody wants to spend it all right here.
Good.
What kind of a timeframe does it take to do this project?
Uh, design wise or construction?
Construction.
Maybe Bill could chime in. Are you still on, Bill?
Put him on the spot again.
Yeah.
I'm on. I, I have not looked at the documents enough to know how intense it is, how many walls or ceilings we're tearing apart and patching. And to be honest with you, probably the biggest driver of the schedule is going to be how much can we have? You know, how much?
Yeah.
How many phases do we have to do this in twenty-four phases where we can have like half a floor at a time, a fourth of a floor, only one room at a time. We have to hop room to room to room. Um, that's going to, I mean, it could, it could take two months and it could take eighteen months, um, depending on how much and you can give us. And obviously you got to keep your day-to-day operations going, um, but that's going to add time and, and money to the project, uh, by dragging it out, unfortunately.
Yeah, those are good points. Uh, the, the phasing would make quite a difference. I was recently involved with a remodel project of a four-story building and they were talking about how phasing and it was going to be such a hassle. They ended up just moving everybody out and they gave the contractor the whole building.
I can speak from experience that after, you know, owners have had to live through stuff, if there is any kind of option to vacate a floor or, or the building, which isn't always easy. Uh, it's better in the end because you can get in and get out and everybody can go back to doing their normal, normal stuff, but that's a pretty tall task to ask to vacate an entire courthouse.
Right.
But.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. And Ryan, you're clear on the direction we want to go, correct?
Boiler replacement, ventilation system, HVAC option two, general work allowance, fire protection sprinkler with more consult concealed heads. Uh, replacement of telecommunication, electrical distribution gear.
With the alternate fire, fire protection system?
Yes, I, I listed the, the more expensive one. Uh, so if we just have that approved, we can, uh, hash that out later if we end up doing an alternate for that, to, to allow you the control over the cost of that.
Sounds good.
And, and possibly you just, you might throw it out altogether and not, not even do an alternate, but we'll do estimating on it first.
Ryan, as we get into this, um, our IT provider has asked to be involved with any IT cabling changes. So we'll probably get them, you know, in contact with you so that you guys can discuss um, things like the cable paths and, you know, where they need to be placed and things like that. So.
Yeah. Excellent.
Anything else for us, Ryan?
Uh, no, just a, a comment. Um, you know, I, I'm, I was happy to, to be spokesman here, but there, there's other people on the design team will have an electrical engineer and then also on GLG architects and I think that's actually a, a team of, uh, we've got BWBR on here as well. Um, just, just so you know, it's not just me, uh, working on it. No, there'll be a, a team to help you out to design this for you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot for the opportunity. Anything else for me?
I don't think so. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Goodbye.
Okay, onto the fun one. We want to start here, Dick. Big sales.
I think the city said they wanted to pay more than their nine thousand million.
Sure, that's a burden on me.
Come on, Katie. Work with us.
We'll go have these.
Let's flip a coin. We got just a good a chance.
It's a lot tougher to gamble with other people's money, isn't it? They sometimes will object.
Yeah, but I get to call it after it lands.
The intent when we went through this was to, let's say
Is the microphone on?
Button up, Dick.
Yeah.
Can you hear him now, Phyllis?
Yes, I don't know.
Dick just needs to look, have the microphone close to your mouth or don't turn away from it.
He's going to swallow if it's any closer.
There you go.
Is that good? Can you hear him, Phyllis?
Yeah, but it's very soft.
Let's try it. Let's change my phone.
I wonder if that's one of the new microphones that Lane and I just set up. It might not be adjusted quite correctly.
Is this better?
Much better.
Okay, there we go. Okay. So I'll try it again. Uh, Dick Strasberg with So what we did was we went through and looked at this and said, um, let's go back to what we had before. Let's look at the square footage and let's look at what the program was that was put together, uh, for the project. And, um, and then let's just update it with costs. And I think all of us are pretty surprised as we went through this in terms of the dollars. We did, so the discussion today is really not as much about the square footage and the, you know, what we're putting in, uh, the project. I think everyone's pretty familiar with that. But it's really more about the, the whole cost escalation on this. So if you see the, I'll kind of, kind of hit the the big main point on this thing is, um, you'll see the first, first, uh, area that's highlighted is a owner's design contingency at three percent. And then the bottom of the page, the owner project contingency. So it's eight percent between the two and that'd be pretty typical. That's, that, that, that's what we'd have on a typical market. You know, somewhere between, you know, seven and 10% would be, uh, fairly typical for those. And the, the reason for the, uh, owner design contingency, we're at a schematic, we're at a concept design. We aren't even schematic yet. So there's still, there's still, we got to design the building yet to determine, to determine what it is. Uh, and these are Beckenhour numbers on the square foot costs. Uh, and Bill, maybe you could just talk a little bit about the recent project that you just had, um, had bid.
There, there's another, another project. It's actually very similar in total overall square foot, but, uh, it's got more of, uh, the, the law enforcement center is really not a part of it. It's more just a, a more of a high level security jail, um, with some offices and intake area, uh, kitchen, laundry facilities and stuff. So we just got done bidding out the final phase. We haven't given a GMP yet, but we did a actually five packages on that one to try to buy it out early to, to try to get ahead of some of this escalation, um, with materials. So feel pretty confident in that square foot along with the site work cost, uh, with the, I guess, the information that we have about the site, um, even though we don't have soil borings, but the fact that we've got some recommendations from some adjacent properties and working those numbers as well. So obviously, uh, as Dick said, and, um, we've all said before, these are conceptual square foot numbers. We haven't, we haven't done a deep dive like we normally would into budgets, but with some recent, very similar projects. Um, I guess there's some confidence there in that, at least with what the market's doing now. Um, I guess there's some confidence there in that, at least with what the market's doing now. So then we can change tomorrow, but.
If we use these numbers, um, uh, these are actual numbers. These aren't inflated. The ones on the top, they're, they're more of an actual number. And then we get down to the, uh, we can talk about the allocation after, but let's talk about this total cost on it first. So this number has, it floats all over the place. Here's a, here's a few statistics. Uh, some of the larger contractors uh, put out, uh, different cost indexes and they do it based on actual bids. Uh, one of the largest contractors in the region, they had, um, twenty one point five nationally and, uh, twenty two point five, uh, in Minneapolis. And I was, we're a firm that does work in Fairmont and Minneapolis and a Fairmount in South Dakota. It's not any less here. If anything, it's a little bit more because of, there's just so much activity here. So that's what it did last year. So then we broke it down a little bit further and said, what happened the last quarter last year? Well, it improved a little bit because it was, uh, twenty, it was two point nine percent nationally for a quarter and two point six in Minneapolis. So if we look at that, well, that's, that's a rate that's probably more like 10 to 12%. Okay, so then we, um, we've interviewed contractors just that are working in this region that do a lot of work, uh, primarily in Sioux Falls. We started asking them, what are they seeing for inflation? We interviewed one this morning on a project in Brookings. And they came back and said, uh, they had 25% last year and they're using 15% for 2022 and 10% for 2023, which is a guess. They don't know. Uh, so we plug this in at 12.5% on an annual basis. And that is a guess. It's, it's just based on what we hear out there. We could have another year like last year. But, uh, thinking that it's somewhere between 10 and 15% for these, for these two years. And then also when we look at this, we, um, we estimate this based on the midpoint of construction. That's how contractors look at it. I'm, um, in terms of because you aren't buying it all out on day one and, and, uh, you, you, we, we as a, as a county, we may buy it out, but the subs are, they're pricing it out and when they're gonna actually provide the materials. An example on that is some real challenging things are, uh, the roofing right now. And, uh, we are in a project in Watertown. There's a building built that was similar square footage. About five years ago, it was seven dollars and 50 cents a square foot. We got estimates and this is, this isn't hard bid. It's just getting input from contractors. This is a building that would start construction this fall, about a hundred thousand square feet. And, uh, the original estimate came back at $25 a square foot. So we're seeing just hyperinflation there. And so then I had to dig into that a little bit further. And spoke with a roofing subcontractor on Wednesday and he said, plan on 15% per quarter this year. So we've got some, you know, real big numbers coming at us. And, um, uh, so we plugged, uh, 12.5 in here. Um, I think it's, I think it's a, that's definitely a something that, you know, kind of also group decision here on, on how much we should plug in there because we don't know.
I just heard today though, that they're talking about inflation to stay in, in base to another year. So if that's the case, we don't know what percentage it's gonna have, but they say that they don't think inflation is gonna go away this, this, this coming year. So I, I honestly think twelve and a half is low. That's my personal opinion. I think you, we need a larger number in there. I'm not sure what it is, but.
Yeah.
But I think that that's something we, we should put in there, the larger number. I mean, you were just, you just got done saying that the rookie went from seven and a half dollars a square foot.
Twenty five and five here.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's, there's, I'll, I'll plug it in here just in the, in the spreadsheet here, just so we get an idea of what that is. What does it do? A few other things that just, uh, come in and as, as it's pulling up here is, um, we went through and, uh, we plugged in, uh, 1.4 million on the land. And that's, uh, roughly, I think where, where you might be on that one. It's not finalized yet. Uh, we, on the, uh, FFNE, the fixture furniture and equipment. We, um, we've got 250 for furniture and that's, that's putting, it's not high end furniture, but what we try and do in facilities like this is put in, put in the kind of furniture that's gonna, it's gonna last. And this isn't, this isn't, um, and we avoid wood for the most part. Uh, it's worse, more steel. Uh, things are gonna last a long time. And, um, so there's, there's plenty to, uh, of areas here that are, we can, that can go up or down, but we tried to hit the middle of the road. Um, other things like the telecom data, that's actually a quote. Um, and then we got the jail related FFNE and that could range from, it's probably a little on the low end, but it's, it could be, you know, maybe 400,000 on up to a million. It's been a lot, a lot of dollars on those things. And then we've, uh, talked about this radio tower. That's, that's, I think our quote was, um, about a hundred and fifty, but it had also the, uh, the foundation and some, the erection in it. And we I've got some of that included in the number above. So that, the number is pretty good. I mean, it's, it's somewhere in that range. And, um, so then before you get to the soft cost, you're you got another million dollars just, just on, just on the FFNE. Okay, then went through and, you know, we can, you can see what we put in for the, uh, soft cost estimates of AE fees and professional fees and survey testing and, and those type of things. Some of those are already under, are, you know, in, in, in contracts. Uh, so then you come to the end of it, a typical project at this stage, you'd put in, you know, roughly 5%. That's because we, we don't know what we're gonna find. We don't know that your soil's out there. We, we think we know what we've got out there, but we know we've got some challenging situations there. And, um, so that's what it comes up to, 39, 39 million, uh, total cost. And, um, so why don't I just plug it in? If we do, let's just see if we put in it, what do you think, 15% or something?
That's what I would say. Why don't you go 17?
Okay, 17? That, that moves it up to, it moves it from roughly six million to eight million.
Cause I guess I don't wanna go to the voters and say, you know, that all of a sudden we put it out there that we're gonna spend 39 million and all of a sudden it's, it's a $42 million. Cause we can't go back.
There's, there's a lot of projects right now that were approved in the last year or two that are, are getting nailed with this.
Yeah, cause then we have to go back and cut out things in order to get back down to the.
And, and something else too on this is the way that the contract is, uh, was set up with, uh, Beckenhour. Uh, you pay for what it actually is. And if we don't spend it all, I mean, you only pay for the actual.
Correct.
They get their percentage, uh, fee on it for managing it, but you pay for the actual bids.
Yeah, the main risk is sticker shock to those paying the bill.
That's exactly.
Uh, but the actual bill's going to be, well, we come out with bids anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just saying if it's, it comes up to 42 million, for example, you gotta go back in here, figure out how much you gotta take out. I'd much rather give it a sticker shock upfront than try to max it. Well, we gotta take that out. We don't have a choice then.
So something you'll, you'll find is there's a lot of, lot of opinions on this. There's a real lot. People that really believe that it's gonna level out. And we've looked at some other indexes that are substantially lower. So we're trying to be conservative to get it covered. But you kinda see what we're up against. And what's interesting in this is I've had my whole career where it's more or less 3%. You know, it's more or less been that, you know, got out of college in 83 and it's been more or less that, you know, with a few little exceptions. And now we got this stuff where it's all 3% of me. That's like per week in some cases now. So we're, we're really that, you know, this is, I think this is new territory for, you know, for our team that's on the call here. This is new territory for everyone. And it's just, this whole balance that we're trying to do is figure out, okay, what's, what's reasonable? And what is, and what kills the project? Cause it's just, we've been too conservative on it.
Yeah, it's uncharted territory because the whole construction game is so different from la, the last hyperinflation period back in the eighties. I lived through that.
I don't, any other comments from members of our team? Bill or, um, the, the design side?
I don't know that I have. I mean, it's obviously unprecedented time and given budgets are, uh, very tough right now. I think Dick spoke to most of it. Um, across the board, there are things that we're trying to do. Um, as a construction management firm, once we get to the point where we can buy jobs out, you know, trying to do stuff early, trying to procure materials and lock pricing in. There are still a lot of contractors and suppliers that you can lock pricing in. Um, but there's some such as EPDM roofing. Um, that they, they don't actually give a price to the roofing subcontractor until the material ships from the factory, which might be seven months after they place the order. So we've got different, different things in place to checks and balances to at least keep tabs on that, but it's very unprecedented in what we have to do now compared to what we were doing just two years ago. So.
Another point that I think makes it different in this market is what we're seeing. It used to be you, you'd put together a whole bid package and you take it out to the market and you'd get bids. We're doing that on any project right now. We have a project right now, the one I mentioned earlier. We're looking at buying the roof on it right now and buying it out. Literally it's out on the street right now to get bids on it. We'll take delivery on it as soon as we can get it. And then we'll just store it for maybe even up to a year because we have to wait for the steel and the concrete to precast panels to catch up. So I think those type of things, I mean, it'll be multiple bid packages and you buy it out as you go. Um, then also the other part of it that, uh, plays into this is the whole, the timing of when you, um, purchase the bonds. That's, that's actually, that's, that's a big decision as well because in terms of what the forecast, what the interest rates are and some of that stuff might be bigger than what we're talking about here in terms of actual payments. You know, we haven't had anything in the last, I'm gonna say 30 days. Uh, I mean, just in general, there's an overall feel that it's inching up. But I think, um, you know, you're, you're Tom Truman would be a real good person to check in with that. He's dealing with that every day. So other questions on it, other comments on it? And also we aren't making the decision today. This is, we have to have this pinned down by the end of the month for the ballot. Have on the ballot language. And I think there should be some vetting in terms of the allocations on here. You know, we, we made a, a run at the allocation between the county and the city. Uh, but you know, that needs to be, that needs to be really, both parties need to sit at the table and, and, you know, really, really figure that out in terms of what is, what's equitable between the two, the two parties on this. We made some of these that were, there, there's some easy ones on it. And then there's other ones which I, we don't know. So we just, uh, there's sure isn't anything else in store on that. So we've got till basically the end of the month. What's the date of your, uh, your meeting, the end of the month of that?
Twenty second.
Cause it's 22nd.
Okay, that's what it is. We've got moved up. You can do it whenever.
Yeah, I think, uh, we need it by the end of the month though for the to follow the state. So this is a, this is a run at it. It's, it's a draft and these can be tweaked, um, and, um, lots of room for, you know, this has been, this has been what our team has come up with, um, on these, on these, uh, you know, square footages. And we feel pretty good about the square footages and the actual conceptual design. And, and also on the square footage, the, the dollars per square foot where we are at the market right now. We're very fortunate back in our, on, on this because they've, they've, they've had another project just bid as in just like Tuesday. So we're very, so these, these are good numbers as far as where we sit today. And then it's the whole debate on where we go, uh, from here. Other questions and comments? There's no actions today. It's just simply feeling the end. It's a, you know, honestly, I think for all of us on the team too, this is a sticker shock for us as well. Because it's, it is, uh, you know, it's, it's the world we live in right now.
Our city delegation, we've got three here. There, you didn't jump up and run away already, uh, with looking at how the allocations are. These look at all reasonable as far as from what, from your viewpoint. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm going to.
Is this, is this working? Everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, me and Andy, I mean, we, these are kind of allegations, um, that we just flushed out. Obviously we could sit down and go more in depth and, uh, you know, how many, you know, is it fair to divide the evidence room 50 50? Or do we, do we shift it one way or the other? Is it fair to divide the armory 50 50? Uh, the communications is already 50 50. That's the way it works. And, um, and roughly, if I remember right, the square footage for the sheriff's office and our offices are very close. So it's very close. Um, the grounds, uh, we kind of picked a number random. Uh, just kinda looking at, you know, 50% of the entire building is just count. And then 25 of each of the, or 50% of each of the remaining 50%, so 25%, 25% roughly um, is city and county. Um, but I mean, we can look at those numbers a lot closer and come out a lot, a lot closer. I think they did a really good job based on the information we gave them. But we hadn't really looked at that up to this point until we were discussing it earlier this week. So I, I think Andy gets back next week. We could certainly have a meeting and sit down and really look at them and see if we can massage them one way or the other. But I think you're real close to the numbers. Um, Andy could speak to it too, if he's still on. But, um, you know, the, the only one I have no idea about, but we just guessed was 30% for site preparation and grounds. I think is what we put down for city versus 70% for the county. I'm guessing, um, you know, just, we probably have more traffic, but at the same time, we don't have 50% of the building. So it, it's I think they're good guesses and I think that we could sit down and try to figure it out better. Um, but I, I think you're real close. Andy?
I, I'd agree with you there. I think for the most part, I don't, I don't expect to see a big change. I don't expect to see anybody, uh, find any, any relief, uh, by, by any fine tuning. So I think those are pretty good numbers. But yeah, we'll find two nos. You know, for example, the, uh, the site cost itself, the 1.4, I think that that's set right now at, at a hundred percent county, if I'm not mistaken. Um, that's the land itself, the outside, the site prep. Yeah, we see that as shared, uh, in the neighborhood of, of a one third city. Um, we operate pretty well that way now with our, our physical building. We're in now the safety center is a two thirds, one third for the ground floor and 50 50 for the basement. Cause that's kinda how it's shared, but that's just the structure and nothing outside. Um, so I think that in looking at this, uh, we, we looked at the, at the, uh, concept and we see things like the jail. That's 100% county. Uh, then you get out of the jail and it's pretty easy to look at that concept and see what's shared. And we looked at that at 50 50. And, uh, what is, what is county and what is, uh, city as a hundred percent each way? And that's easy to see. And, and so the only fine tuning I expect that we're gonna see is just like Chief said, uh, where we'll decide if some of these shared spaces are truly 50 50. Um, you look at, uh, the number of staffing, our, our agencies have similar staffing, but, um, the police department has more sworn where I have about half of them or a little more than half are actual jailers and won't be using the evidence room. For example, or the armory. And so some of these things we might fine tune a bit. Uh, but, uh, I think that the numbers you're looking at are gonna be pretty close. At the, at the end of the day, are we talking 30% or, or 29%? You know, it's, it's gonna be something like that. So I'm comfortable where we're at. And I think that we can, can be more accurate in, in, um, in just a meeting between the chief and I.
The, yeah, and the purpose of the question was just to see where you're at in that respect, how close you think you are. Sounds like this is, this is, uh, perhaps uh, guess 2.0 and there may be 3.0 is gonna get us where we wanna be.
Sure, we can, I mean, we can look at it a little tighter. We could actually generate numbers from statistics and number of employees and stuff. Um, you know, it's just the square footage for the separate areas is, as I recall, real close just because we're organizing it differently. But other than that, it's, uh, it's the shared areas that we need to look at and kinda get a better idea of where we, cause we probably do, we do have more evidence, um, you know, and you could look at that. We could kind of say, of course, it depends on which day as to how much evidence you have. And kind of just like the jail, it's a fluid thing. I've got someone cleaning out the evidence room this week. So maybe next week's a good week to, uh, to count those numbers, but, uh, I'm kidding, but, uh,
Yeah.
The, the idea is that we can show the influx and outflux of evidence versus the agencies and say, okay, well, based on this today, we could say it's actually 45, 65 or 45, 55 or whatever.
Yeah.
And, 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 and flux that number, um, and, and look at it. So yeah, me and Andy can certainly do that here in the next week or so, when he gets back. So.
Good deal. Thank you.
So when you put the 17% in, what you come down with the total at the end?
Comes up at forty uh, 1.5 with 32 for the county and 9.5 for the city.
Thirty two for the county.
Thirty two for the county.
Yeah, thirty two for the county, nine point five.
Would it change that number up on top there where you had twelve and a half? That changed that number to what?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
No, yeah, I know that, but I mean, uh,
Eight, eight point one total.
Okay.
And then that allocates out there, but yeah, six, one eighty six.
Okay.
And, and then city is, uh, one nine four nine.
Okay, thanks.
I think we may want to clarify real quickly that, that seventy percent annually. Uh, we're estimating a midpoint of construction at twenty two months. So that comes up to a total escalation of thirty one point two percent. Over that twenty two months.
And we look at this big picture. I mean, we look at how much contingency we got in here. We got eight million dollars there and then down below one point three. And then, you know, on the design at seven hundred and we got, we got you know, and it's, it, the, the design, it isn't really fair to say that's just a contingency. It's just, it, we call it a design contingency is, but for the, it's the things that will, it's refinement of the design and that, and that's relatively low. I think, uh, BWBR for suggested, uh, four point five. And the five percent at, at, uh, project contingency, oftentimes we end up with alternates on a project. And then if it doesn't go, if it goes well and we don't run into soil problems and surprises along the way, then we'll get some of the alternates in that we took out. And they're usually formed at the time of, when we get the, you know, the closer in and honing in on the numbers and things we we don't feel like we can afford some of those to go to alternates and then possibly the ones you can put back in later.
So I know we're not making decisions at this time, but certainly next week. When we're looking to that, then what are we bonding? I mean, are we looking at bonding the total project costs and then the city pays us back? There you will, but we're looking at doing our portion of that. And then my question is simultaneously, what is the city approving their portion? Can we, any? Something went completely awry, can we sever that part of the project off and receive forward? Because I mean, if this is a total project cost of everything, we cannot bind an unborn to something. And I get that we're all moving forward and that's going to cities a part of this discussion, but I just think when the voters go to vote, practically, how does that work?
So the plan's been one, one bond.
Right. So that's my thought. So it would be the total cost.
It'll be the total cost and the city will would figure out how they want to pay for it. They would just make a payment twice a year. Yeah.
And, and so then my thought on that is then that just pays the bond down not much faster if you will, when they're paying their portion to us. We're putting that towards the bond cost. But if the city says no.
Well, we should be able to take off that half of the law enforcement center. It is, there is an efficiency when you're together. So it's not cutting it in half. There's maybe the architect should maybe speak to that, but there's a significant portion here that's efficient with sharing, you know, lobby restrooms, common areas. And it's, it's, it's not gonna be that half, but it's right. But we can lob that part off. And instead of the thirty two million, it might be thirty two and a half or thirty three. Probably more than that. I don't know. Do you want to weigh in on that, Mark?
Yeah, I, I think it would be more significant than that because there, there's a, there, you know, the police and the sheriff have gone through this, um, program, um, pretty thoroughly, really early on and cut out a lot of duplicate spaces because they could share spaces. So, um, you know, there's, those spaces are gonna have to stay because even if it's only the sheriff department, they're gonna need the conference rooms, the interview rooms, the evidence room, things like that, uh, break rooms, locker rooms, things like that, that they're, they're sharing right now. So we're not gonna see just a reduction of the police's portion come out of it. It, it would be, you know, maybe half of the police's portion or something like that that could come out of it. Those things that are specifically related to the police. If that were to happen. So, uh, they are doing, um, a lot of sharing of space.
Yeah, I think the problem.
The problem that Alexis is talking about is, is real because we are required under the bond indenture, right, to, uh, you know, as long as there's a taxpayer standing, pay back the bond. On the other hand, the city has a completely different relationship with the bond. And, you know, councils can't bond, can't, um, require future councils to pay anything. Right? So that's, that's kind of the heart, the heart of the, the, the legal problem. And so, you know, I, I think ultimately as a commission, we have to count on the goodwill. And the long relationship between the two entities, um, you know, for, uh, and, and, and the need of the city for the space, right? For, um, uh, you know, to, to receive those, those bond payments twice a year. So they, so this council can agree, but the next council can decide now, we, we don't want to do that, you know, we're.
And, and so since it can be a significant, you know, then I think what we end up with is the theory of empty space. We don't believe that's gonna happen. But I think we move forward and I just want to be really clear on that, what we're looking to bond. Whole project and how we answer that. Cause I do think last go around with the, and I don't know whether it was intentional by some folks, truly misunderstood by others, uh, feeling as though we're double dipping on this. And what is the city's portion of things and how, and just understanding that that's not what's going on here. And that's why we have to do the whole cost of the whole project in a bond, even though yes, a chunk of the project is going to be used by the city, but we use it. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page, even though we have this broken out, whatever that number of cost share, if you will, turns, ends up being, it doesn't change the bond at all.
Right. If there's a good news on this, interest rates are still relatively low in the big picture. I think they were the lowest. They happened to hit the, the low of the year that I was born in nineteen fifty nine. And it's, if they haven't, and they hit that tier just to the last year. So I mean, they, they haven't gone up substantially. So there's good news. It's, it's at least the insurance are still relatively low.
Little sunshine.
Yeah.
Well, I think municipal bonds are relatively attractive right now to investors because of the low interest rates. And so we won't have any trouble, I think, getting, getting bidders for, for our bonds. You know, which is the thing that helps to keep the, the prices low. But I, you know, I think time, time is of, of the essence.
But isn't it when you turn around with the city, if you have an agreement with them? Are they? What's the word I'm looking here? They're required to pay their part then, right? You have an agreement with them?
You, you have an agreement with this council.
I know, but that's still with the city. If somebody signs off that city.
Well, here's what I would say. I don't perceive us, let's, let's say we, we get to a point where they, I don't foresee us having an agreement on a cost share, if you will, before you have to make a vote on things. And I still, you know, I've always subscribed to the notion of you gotta have one owner of this building.
Correct.
And that's why we, that's why we go forward. That's why we do things that we, we've done things. And I just wanted, so we, I, I think that really comes after. I think the question comes for, what is, what comes first, the chicken or the egg here? So what do we do? Do we get an agreement all set up with the city and then the bond even passes? Or do we wait, make sure the bond passes? They know exactly what we're talking about. I mean, I think if there's, there's room for argument on each of those things. And I think if we want to go forward with this project regardless, we just keep moving forward with that good rate relationship. And then we establish specifics on that. And if it falls, I mean, that'll, it's gonna happen, but we cross that bridge and we'll relearn that space after that. But um, it is so many counties made it from the law enforcement occupied and those types of things. We don't have any reason to believe it wouldn't. But when it comes time in the next couple of weeks for you guys to make that resolution, knowing, are you saying forty two million versus, you know, what is that amount?
So I, you know, the biggest unknown here is the rate of inflation for materials and labor. And you, you had, you had plugged in twelve and a half percent. And, you know, you would, you had sort of talked a bit about how, well, you know, that might be too low. What, what's your best, your absolutely best guess? You knew we, you knew we'd push you on this, right?
We look at the, you know, if we look at the, um, at what it was last quarter. And if we use that, that is, you know, between ten and twelve percent. And then if we listen to what the contractors are saying now, right now, they're talking maybe more like fifteen. Then we look last year as a whole and it's well, like twenty percent. So I think a lot of it depends on what happens with the war, cost of petroleum. Some of those things are so unknown. But I think if, if we took the war out of it right now, then I, you know, if we were to, our best guess might be that somewhere between ten and fifteen and we picked twelve and a half. But I think part of it is, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot more intel on it than, than anyone else. And we talked to the contractors and, and they don't either. Because they're, they've got the up to date, you know, what, what happened to pipe, I guess, on this week. You know, pipe prices went way up. Well, they know that. So they can tell us right away that that happened. Now, could they see it coming to that extent? No.
That's kind of why I picked seventeen, cause you said fifteen.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's what we're all in. I mean, I don't think we've got, you know, I don't know if, if Beckenhour, what you're seeing on that. I mean, you've got, you've got up to date knowledge on it, but I'm not sure. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, it's so hard right now because just every day, I mean, we just got notified, um, two days ago that Conneer, they do a lot of like aluminum exterior windows. All of their aluminum is going up fifteen percent per quarter. They told all their suppliers, if, if we don't have POs cut by March thirteenth to figure fifteen percent starting now in every quarter until they tell them to stop. But that's happening every day with everything. And now fuel prices, we're getting notifications that, you know, fuel prices are going up and so they're wanting to impact, you know, costs because of that, you know, trucking and I mean, we had a, a large project that just bid and it was like a four thousand dollar hit to the job. So it wasn't substantial, but at the same time, the contractors don't want to have to eat something like that when it's uncontrollable right now. So I don't know, there's not a good answer because every day there's a new surprise on something going up. The lead times getting significant. That's why we're trying to get ahead and do all these early bid packages to order stuff way before we need it. I mean, never would we have done that. Even a year ago, we wouldn't have done that with most things. So I don't know, just trying to react as best as we can right now.
Yeah, Bill, to further the discussion on the unknowns, I think you noted that when you, uh, bid your most recent project, one of your detention, the equipment contractors was significantly lower than the other, others, because they had just wrapped up a project and were looking for another project. So they sharpened their pencil a little bit and, and in order to get in on that project. So timing becomes part of it too. What else is out there? And, uh, our, our, our businesses are the vendors busy and, um, uh, and, and there's no way to predict that.
Yeah, it's a great point, but yeah, I mean, subs, subs are all super busy. A lot of subs are turning down work that they'd never say they would have turned down work before. They've been doing it for forty years. And they're just having to tell people no because they don't have any manpower to do anything. The labor forces are depleted and unemployment's ridiculously low and wages continue to go up and everybody, there's so much work out there right now. I mean, it's kind of crazy to think, but it's just everybody's building, just everybody's go, go, go spending, spending money. So crazy combination.
I think people across the country are doing what we're doing. They've got ARPA funds and, you know, they're, 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 they're spending on infrastructure. That was the whole purpose.
Right. And we've also had, we've also had boards that had to make tough decisions. Um, you know, just like you guys are having to make where, you know, a year ago, they made a decision to forge ahead with the project when it was kind of iffy and they probably saved themselves, you know, two, three million dollars on a twenty, thirty million dollar build because of the price increases and it's hard to think that it's not gonna be the same thing, the way things are looking, but you know, you don't necessarily want to stop projects either, because you got funding, you need to spend it.
I think also something that adds to a big picture is the built up, uh, demand, uh, due to COVID. There's a lot of projects that, projects that didn't happen. Now the need is there.
I mean, I, I think the other, the other issue is that, um, you know, I've been sort of doing my, my scan here and it does look like municipal bond rates, um, are gonna be going up. Because the Fed is starting to increase, um, interest rates across the board. And so, I mean, I think we have to look at the cost of time as, as well, which is, is really substantial. I mean, even a, a quarter point change in municipal bond rates would, would affect this project really substantially.
Something that Tom could probably address to, uh, address, uh, with more detail on it, but something we are seeing, we've observed as it used to be more like twenty year bonds. Now a lot of times we're seeing more like thirty. People are locking in the lower rates and they're locking in quicker too. They aren't waiting. If, if something passes, they lock it in. But that's, that's Tom's department. So we're way too far into it. But in general, that's, that's another, that's a very big decision after. If there, if there was, uh, were to pass, then locking. Does anybody have any other questions, comments?
I think that, uh, you know, as far as the the deal with, uh, working the city into this, I understand, uh, Betty's comments, but this particular cooperative venture is so successful and so beneficial to both entities. And so beneficial to the, all the residents of this county that I don't see this cooperative venture, if it starts this year, I, I couldn't, uh, I couldn't understand a future council or a fish, future commission, uh, torpedoing it in the near future.
I agree with that.
You guys are doing a good job. Let's just put it that way.
That's what, basically what the council told me at my last meeting, which was less than a month ago. So they, they, they understand the need and they understand the desire to report. They, they understand, so now it's time to sharpen the pencils.
Who was speaking?
Oh, Matt was.
Thank you.
Sorry. If nobody has anything else.
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call.
Yeah, man.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.